The fight of the year, the new session will begin now, following immediately by the City Council meeting on May 1st, 24. We have a protocol of ordinance of March 24th. We have ordinances for the city ordinance to establish a cap and. We have ordinances of first reading. One, in ordinance, we have supplemented device general ordinances of the city of the 16th type of 16. Land development code, this is in reference to fees and is for the mass scale. Two, in ordinance two, amended and supplemented device general ordinances of the city of the 16th type of 16. Land development code, this is to add a new section. Three, in ordinance two, amended and supplemented device general ordinances of the city of the 16th type of 17. Zone, reference to section 1706, 060, can be assigned by the table. And number four, in ordinance to establish a stormwater utility in the city of the 16th cabinet. We have resolutions one, two, thirty-two, one of the data events to the table. We authorize review for building tax sales certificates for amendment of resolution R 0231. The reason is continuation of the at stake data. Five, approval request for use of city property and street closing requested by the municipal center. Six, approval request for use of city property and street closing requested by the municipal center. Seven, approval request for use of city property and street closing requested by the municipal center. Eight, approval request for use of city property and street closing requested by the municipal center. Nine, approval resolution authorized the number random agreement between the city of the 16th department and the municipal. Ten, approval of resolution 022423 with the self-located property. Eleven, approval of contract with Ferguson, who is always, I think, who invests as Ferguson Enterprises LLC. Twelve, approval amendment of resolution 04271. This is for 760, you know, secret, you know, LLC for 7830. Thirteen, approval of contract with New Met Contract Incorporated. Fourteen, approval amendment of resolution R 0260 with European E and L LLC. Fifteen, this is in the book of letter of credit. This is in reference to Somerset Evergreen LLC. Eighteen, approval authorization to advertise for allocation to the community house. Seventeen, this is of the premier pool letter of credit to French Creek Evergreen Corporation. Eighteen, all the bodies purchased by the family engineering and corporate works. This is from MRC, Inc.,大地砖 recreation corporation, playground, food, and water supply. Nineteen, approval request for use of city property and street closure requested by the municipal center. Twenty, approval request for use of city sidewalk requested by the municipal market. This is for the stores Johnson and Tier in the resolution. Twenty-one, approval request for use of city property and street closing and sidewalk. Requested by the municipal market, this is for character show. Twenty-two, amendment resolution 062355 to receive approval renewal as to Marsup home features trading as foreign retarder. Twenty-three, amendment resolution R 062355 to receive approval renewal as to record target LLC trading as foreign retarder. Twenty-four, approval resolution to authorize release of escrow to use of destruction. Twenty-five, authorize tax, handle with government, so the tax and utility accounts. Twenty-six, authorize tax, so that you can access tax sales certificate. Twenty-seven, approval request for street closing requested by the municipal university castle. Twenty-eight, approval request for use of city property requested by the municipal board of education. Twenty-nine, approval request for street closing and use of sidewalk requested by the area one pharmacy church. Thirty, approval request for use of city property and culture requested by veterans and minors of any kind of view. Thirty-one, approval amendment of resolution 032425, provision additional amount of 21,054, where it's at the east end. Number two, approval of contract with higher people and associates, this is for the UBC five-year plan. Then we have identical discussion by council, public comment, and based to be members, city council again the new session. Ways in May 15 at five, and then it's following immediately by the city council afterwards. At this time, we begin to order.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins is absent. Councilmember Secor Ludwig, here, leaving after voting names. Newly noted. Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here.
Please be advised that the knowledge partner, the topic meeting, and the asking comply with and satisfy that the adult knowledge base, sufficient notice of time and place, and on the ball public meetings of the municipal council of the city of the 16th, as we call the city clerk, has been placed on a copy of a political city hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of the 16th, May 15.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When we started the month of May, she's, one of the things I saw were the mental health awareness month. So at this time, I just want to encourage everybody to let's shine a light on the importance of mental health, well-being. Make self-care a priority, we talked about it the last time. Let's continue working on breaking the stigma associated with mental health, and support the development of innovative programs and education awareness campaign that ensures that anyone struggling with mental health issues receive the help they deserve, and let's create healthier communities. Thank you.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. My right to have the correspondence, the direct to the local requirements?
Yes, Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments and further addressed.
Thank you. We're going on ordinance course, on this ordinance question, I said, we have an ordinance 04242. An ordinance with the city of the municipal appropriation units, establish a cap and. Before we open the floor for public hearing, I would like to ask, Mr. Moore, I need you to talk a little bit about these specific ordinance.
Absolutely, so the little budget law allows all municipalities a cap on appropriate, or requires a cap on appropriations of about two and a half percent of our prior year appropriations. Also, the law allows a municipality to set by ordinance an increase of that appropriation amount from two and a half to three and a half percent, and also establish a bank for any unused monies in that year. So that's what this ordinance will provide for that extra percent.
Thank you. At this time, any questions or any comments from my colleagues? At this time, we go over the floor for public hearing, use ordinance only. You may come up to the microphone, you have up to five minutes to address the council. Any member of the room, you can address the council with this. See none?
Moving on.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have ordinance on first reading. We have ordinance 052404, in ordinance two, amended and supplemented device general ordinances of the city of the 16th type of 16. Land development code, chapter 16.16, permission applicable to the planning board and zoning board of Jersey. This is in reference to section 16.16, 040, please, and S will be passed to.
Will be ordered setting down Wednesday, May 15, 5:00 PM, same date to the advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have ordinance 052402, in ordinance two, amended and supplemented device general ordinances of the city of the 16th type of 16. Land development code, this is to add a new section, section 16.24, 074, site plan and subdivision applications, city of plan applications.
Will be ordered setting down Wednesday, May 15, 5:00 PM, same date to the advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have ordinance 052402, in ordinance two, amended and supplemented device general ordinances of the city of the 16th type of 16. Zone, chapter 17.6, signage requirements. This is in reference to section 17.06, 060, can be assigned by the nation.
Will be ordered setting down Wednesday, May 15, 5:00 PM, same date to the advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
And then we have ordinance 052404, in ordinance to establish a stormwater utility in the city of the 16th, the county of the 16th.
Will be ordered setting down Wednesday, May 15, 5:00 PM, same date to the advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Now we have resolutions one, two, thirty-two, before we open the floor to work, I know by the council member, there's some questions, apologies for resolutions. I have a few resolutions that I would like to, um, to get a, an update and estimation of them. Lieutenant Hoover, can you talk a little about resolution number nine?
Certainly, Council President, this MOU was made necessary by a program implemented by the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, wherein they are purchasing a number of automated license plate readers to be deployed throughout the county. I want to be clear that Middlesex County is buying them, not New Brunswick. And the MOU is made necessary for really two reasons, because several of them are going to be located within the confines of the city of New Brunswick. And second, because any data garnered from those license plate readers are going to be accessible to our investigation. These are critical tools, they're all over the state, and they've been integral in solving crimes in New Brunswick and around the state.
Thank you. Twenty-two, twenty-three, remember first?
Sure, Council President, both liquor licenses have been enacted for over three years, and the Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control is now requesting them to renew their license through special ruling.
Thank you. And Mr. Dominguez, number thirty-two, I know we have you taking the C five plan, which was pre-managed, so this is a report, so I think it is hard to deal with.
Thank you, Council President. So as part of the state bringing back the urban enterprise zone program, they issued a waiver for a few years of not needing to have a five-year plan for UEZ funds and projects because of COVID. That timeframe is to elapse either at the end of this year or early next year. And so the requirement is that we use some of the funds that have been allocated to us from the UEZ to hire a vendor to perform and develop this five-year plan for the anticipated and projected uses of our future allocations for UEZ funds. This is a requirement to comply with the statute, and we went out to bid, we got several vendors. We felt that this was the best vendor with the most experience, and they included even a revision of the plan within their pricing, and we thought that that was prudent, given some of the difficulty with the urban enterprise zone folks over at the state. So we recommend to hire, hire and rule for this project.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to open the meeting to the public for public comments on the resolutions only. You have up to five minutes, no time off. Any member of the public wishes to address the council on the resolutions in separate sessions.
Yes, good evening, Council, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I want to ask about number sixteen, renovations to the front porch of the guest house. Can you tell me how quickly can this be accomplished, and what do you have in mind?
Dr. Ludwig?
Sure, Ludwig. The porch pad is now at least forty years since it was worked on. The wood is rotted. We did a number of repairs to it. They held for a while, but rotten wood has to be replaced. And since the house is on the spur of the register, the audit that had to come up with an acceptable replacement process that the State Office of Historic Protection would approve, and they did approve it. Thanks, well, I hope you get some successful bids and are able to move forward quickly. The very next one, what's the status of this project? I see this would be releasing the balance of site inspection fees, but it's my understanding that the building is only a shell. They haven't actually finished the project, you know, what is the trigger to release this funding? The very next one is set.
Yes, actually, this is the psych performance guarantee and residual inspection fees from the original project, which is back in 2007, which is what we know as Ten Plum Street and the parking structure. So now that the other shell and essentially the Somerset Urban Renewal One is, that the site work is done within the public right of way, we're releasing both.
Interesting, so the one from fifteen years ago. Thank you, let's move on to the next page, court tabber, rescinding approval. And also the, I'm sorry, the corridor tabber and the court tabber. Can somebody explain what's going on here?
I think I did correct it, but I would ask them to say it again.
Sure, Council President. Both liquor licenses are enacted, and the Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control is requiring them to renew their liquor license through special ruling.
Okay, and they're doing that, they're proceeding?
They will, they have to apply through the special ruling first.
Okay. Can I also ask about twenty-six, canceling a tax sale certificate, this is at the train station, correct?
Is it more round?
Yes. Okay, and this was the subject of litigation many years ago, is this a result of that litigation or just a routine matter? No, this is a routine matter, oh. And yeah, I guess on the final item, I just wanted to ask about the price tag for higher rule. I know that they, you know, I've seen them do good work, but, you know, is spending six figures on the five-year plan, you know, normal, what percentage of the total funding is that going to be? And are there going to be other administrative expenses as well?
Mr. Dominguez, I know this is not to exceed 120, so we could just address?
Sure, so the 120 covers the entire allocation the state grants us to use for this funding. We got some pricing that was below this, but we had concerns that they had never done any planning work for UEZ, and did not include provisions in their provisions, and some people came in over the 120 somehow, even though that was all the money that was available for this. But it seems pretty typical, it's in line with the bids that we got. I don't know what bids other towns got, but the state did allow for 120,000 to be used by each municipality. Doesn't impact the administrative funds that their municipalities are allowed to use from the UEZ every year, so it won't have any impact on that, so it won't affect administrative coverage in the city.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, and I'll just say, I appreciate you asking questions of people, so this is taking me some trouble. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, I would like to talk about nine. Who, I heard it's mentioning, mentioned about reading license plates, reading license plates. I've got several times in traffic authority meetings, to, to where, and Mr. Valenti was a witness to this saying, I would like to know, will these, any of these cameras, license, to read license plates, be able to read vehicles that are using these tinted black covers to cover your license plates, where Mr. Valenti said that these are federal or government people that are using this, and I know that is not true. Meaning when I say tinted, just like your tinted windshield, your windows are tinted where you can't see them due to where the license plates, due to where I know New Brunswick does, I have a couple of them, because I just witnessed the action that went over to B and P with the same detective over there, with the situation with the man with the gun over on Trenton Oxford Street. Well, how can you read with tint license plates covering it?
Lieutenant Hoover, do we know if that's a possibility?
I have no idea.
Well, I think you need to do, like I said, I've been bringing it up in meetings at the traffic authority, due to where, I have to say, I see it's not only New Brunswick Police Department, due to where, that has these license plates, but I don't see the appropriate reason for a New Brunswick detective or police department to have this, unless you plan to do something criminal for someone to block your license plate for not to read it.
You mean all mark, vehicles, police, people, that's why you're talking?
Not to, no, I'm seeing people that I know, due to where, that don't even, hardly even relate to state of government, like I was told at the traffic meeting by Mr. Valenti.
License plate readers that we discussed are the property of Middlesex County. I would, I would offer Ms. Moore to contact them and ask them that question.
Well, either way, with the cameras that you already caught upon Livingston and Sanford Street, those inspired by New Brunswick Police Department, like I said, due to where, what is the purpose of even, like I said, unmarked cars having the tint, not able to be able to read their license plates? What, do they plan to do something dirty, due to where someone cannot turn their license plate in? For anyone, whether it's police or anyone from the street. I don't see why to recommend it, it looks like you're hiding some, you're really trying to hide the license plate, just in case you do get caught doing something, what, nobody can read your license plate, whether you're in an accident or not, hit and run or anything?
So what I would suggest is, like Lieutenant Hoover, just say?
No, I suggest that, I, no, no, I suggest, you, you, due to where New Brunswick has the same cameras as well in here already, where you didn't pay $5,000 for each camera, like I said, on the corner of Livingston, Sanford, I forget where the other one was put, but due to where, for the same purpose. So like I said, you find out what the purpose is, why do wire vehicles allowed to have shades over their license plates where they cannot be read? Thank you.
Anybody else want to help there?
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
At this time, we are, give a moment to, Mr. Castaneda, I know that you have to do also, you may want to do that?
I have a little sign, sorry, he's on.
Okay, good. We have previous engagements also.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to stick.
At this time, we are, we are open the floor for public comments. I would like a little council, council members, which to make comments. How to open the floor? And, no, see, no, nobody's. Getting ready to open the floor for the public, for public comments only. We're still the same, there is not a question and answer period, this is comments. Any questions that I might have, that I just want to, I will do that, but if not, I will take the information and, uh, leave it time. So to my discretion. And then we have up to five minutes to come to address the council, and only one is to be addressed.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Cradville, I'll start with an unfortunate situation. I was awakened at about 4:15 Saturday morning by someone breaking into my house, I needed help, and I called. Was grateful for the New Brunswick police to showed up, and from what I can tell, handled the situation appropriately. So I want to say thank you to Officer Andy Rodriguez, Officer Shaw Kohler, Officer Sokram, Detective Baymon, and I think, give me, it was probably a sergeant there too, but I was just waking up to glass shattering in my home, and, you know, unfortunate situation, but I appreciate their assistance, and I just wanted to say that here. I am disappointed I didn't get any follow-up on the questions that I had asked last time, so I was asking, is this statement on the city website correct? Is Mr. Fleming involved in being a bunch of lying family worship church? Was anybody able to look into whether that's an accurate statement, or has the website been changed? Is he still a part of that organization or not? Okay, can you continue?
I would say the website, I'm not sure if he's allowed, I will answer that, because I'm not sure, whatever. If it's correct, I would assume that he's stated, but if it's not, it should have, probably they will have changed the rating, without follow-up.
Yeah, I've asked him multiple times, and he won't give me an answer, so definitely, you know, suspicious.
I will try.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I'd also asked the date on which the fire director was prohibited from driving city vehicles, can we be able to discern what that date was?
Mr. Castaneda, I'm going to go through that, because we've already said that before. Do you mean, do you mean, did you provide that information?
You provided the date.
Right here, you provided the information that you wanted, whatever we are able to provide you, we take, we receive, so, okay.
Well, I think there's a little more you can provide, and I've asked for it multiple times, and you claimed that you've given it, but you haven't. You did not give me the date, I've asked for the date that the decision was made, and I've asked many times, and the video record will show it. So anybody out there that wants to review the video record on New Brunswick Today YouTube channel, or on the city's Vimeo channel, can see it, including you, and I think it, you know, reflects poorly on the council when you say that you gave information that you didn't give. And I'm just asking you to get that information for me, or say we're not going to give it to you is one other option. But don't gaslight me and say you gave it to me, because you did.
I'm not, that's like, you know me better than that. What I'm telling you is that, to the best of my recollection, we gave that information here. Or is the information that you want something else, or we gave what we could here. Mr. Julius was very intrigued when he did that.
Well, to be fair, at first, when I first asked about it, you said, we're not going to tell you if he's allowed to drive city vehicles, that's top secret. And then I came back the next weekend, you admitted that you had been prohibited from driving vehicles, and now I'm asking what date it was. I also brought you a police report, and I asked you to comment on the gentleman who was issued a summons for his operation of a city vehicle. Did you ever look into that, did you find out what his offense was?
They put it in the report, asked it, but why don't you give me hostile offense?
Well, I asked whether the, because it said.
So what's that you're looking for?
My question was, was it a unregistered vehicle, or was it an unlicensed driver? It wasn't clear from the report.
That I don't know.
So no one looked into that either?
He was a city vehicle, so I'm pretty sure he was registered, so I, and that's a personal matter, nonetheless.
As it is. Right, right.
The reason was going here on both sides, whenever it, yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, think we should, we should be, having city workers be more safe with the vehicles, especially after what's happened lately. I also have asked repeatedly about the ambulance service. I've also asked about getting a meeting to discuss transparency in government meetings, and that goes back to January 9th. I think you're on these emails, I haven't gotten any meeting yet, haven't gotten any answers to all the questions I provided about the government entities and their meetings, and those meetings being promoted. And, yeah, I guess I'll just ask you a few more questions before we part ways. So any statement on the protest at Rutgers?
No comments.
Okay, Superintendent Johnson said that New Brunswick is one of the safest school districts, do you agree with that?
I don't know what you said, or what kind of, I don't know what context, so I, I would tell you that I am confident in the process of the public school system. Of course, I mean that we have some challenges, but it's a pretty good one.
Yeah, and, you know, we have a big problem in the neighborhood, there's no public restrooms, and I've brought this up before, one of the nice things about the Feaster Park improvements, when you added restrooms, but they haven't opened yet, May 1st, when are they going to open?
Thank you, I will answer that before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, I have to say, I couldn't go to sleep after the last meeting thinking about you, Councilmember Escobar and Mr. Paul Dean. I tell you, it's not looking good for you, Councilmember, uh, President Escobar, due to where, wow, the Lord is not happy with you, where what, you're not doing what you were sworn in to do, and that to help the public. Wow, I asked you four times, excuse me, it's to be five times now. Was Officer Alexander Uney suspended with pay or without pay? You were Mr. Anderson, and I said one thing, I told, what I see is nothing I wish, it's like I saw what my mom is going to pass, nothing I would wish, 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 wish for. But wow, I will tell you, due to where, yes, the Lord is on my side, because wow, a lawyer who's not even my lawyer yet to email me a message yesterday telling me, Danielle Moore, right away, due to where, I didn't know what the law was, what, where, yes, I. right away, due to where I didn't know what the law was, but where, yes, I filed my tow claim down at City Council yesterday to file a lawsuit against New Brunswick Police Department, but I am suffering from the damn damage of what, I can't even keep my bra strap on my arm. Why am I suffering? Wow, because Alexander Unes and Detective Walcott damn lying on me? Did I go to internal affairs, the first call? Now, I'm going to go to internal affairs, due to I just spoke to Detective Walcott and Sergeant Martinez, but wow, I see Lieutenant Hoover, it's nothing better than Captain Miller, where he does not report any damn thing from what I said in here. Wow, for him to lie on the police report, say this was French and Seaman Street, due to where my injury with the victim walking with medical gloves, policemen, walking across, my, and accident happened on the corner of James, near James and French Street. Wow, on the police report, it says, oh, a witness from 165 French Street. Wow, where I was located? No one can look out the damn window or the door and see, to see what was going on up here? So, wow, what is he lying protecting two victims for, the same way, wow, he's putting hate on me? What, I, my lawyer told me, what, being charged disorderly conduct, what, I shouldn't even been putting damn handcuffs, because I didn't hit that girl. Like I said, I wasn't over at the fight, and what, I'm going to prove it all to you, due to where, what? The purpose of that damn problem over there was due to where, what? I have more protection for New Brunswick, New Jersey, than New Brunswick, sorry, ass police department, that is someone over there threatening him, to give him for what they done to me. I didn't ask anybody, but like I said, for you to try to say, put the damage on what I'm going through, my arm torn three locations, what, dislocated, what, I had no other choice, you will see me move my arm, because I have to deal with the dislocation, but wow, with it being torn in so many locations, what, the pain? I don't want to start taking damn morphine, but to be drowsy all day, but wow, severe pain? I was doing good, the Lord is blessing and blessing me, like I said. Oh, and I, do I have the evidence? Like I said, I wanted to be a lawyer detective, do I have all the evidence, due to what? With him damn following me, even on what, at January 14, 2024? Okay, he's on call with Mr. Dean, the Dean's house, that was when I found him, he collapsed inside. What does Mr. Dean, look at the body camera, what does Mr. Dean, hey, stop talking to her like that, she's only helping me. What type of damn officer, officer do you keep allowing to do things wrong? That girl was in handcuffs at Walgreens for a reason, because I did not hit her first, and then what, he came over there and took her out of handcuffs? What, then down to police headquarters, she rides with him, I ride a rogue officer rouse, due to where, what? He's under Unes, what, he makes me sit there and then suffer and crying, due to where I'm in pain, telling me that I got away to a lady officer, arrived to check me, but wow, did he catch Lisa Robinson down to take her out of damn handcuff immediately? Please, what type of, what type of people are you, defending people who are sworn under the law? Don't follow the damn law! And please, like I said, to new Mr. Shemmy and Lieutenant Louver, and like I said, Keith Walcott and Alexander Unes, I pray you feel the damn pain and believe me that the Lord punished each and every one of you, because like I said several times, what, from this? All happening, what, because somebody asked me for damn food, due to where, what, I had to text messaging, voicemails, what, makes me to be a criminal? After all this, I shouldn't have had to go through all of this, all because, wow, somebody asked for help? And due to why I have every damn piece of evidence, expect to go lawsuit!
Yes, anybody else?
Tell you, I don't even want to see you damn hateful, excuse me, no, we disrespect nobody, but I don't even want to see these hateful fucking people anymore. Make you feel the pain!
Hi, equal rights on progress in Am Street. First question, I was wondering if there's any updates on the George Street project, the results or?
George Street, yes. And not enough, yes. Okay. As soon as I get one, then I'll start the YouTube program.
Okay. Even, I know it's a long process, and it's a, you know, very complicated proposal, so I'm not expecting anything in the finals, but it is nice to have updates as things progress, and in particular, any, you know, insights for how the public can get involved and be helpful with this. I also do want to, you know, reiterate something that was raised by an earlier speaker, which is, you know, that as the weather's getting warmer, people are probably feeling more inspired to make use of our public parks, which is a wonderful thing, so I would also, you know, appreciate an update on when the public restrooms at the parks would be reopened for the season, I think that's just useful information for people to have, and also specifically the doors to Feaster Park, if, even when they are reopened, I think it would be good to label the doors, because right now they're just plain gray doors, so no one would know that they are bathrooms unless they saw the tape and paper signs from last summer, to that effect, so that's hopefully, you know, not a very arguulous task, but I think it would make a difference. And then I'll just, you know, reiterate a previous request that I made, I think, the occasion, when we have updates on projects or the work of various departments in the city, it's very helpful, it's very, you know, valuable, it gives time for these meetings, and helps the public to appreciate and understand the work that's so often happening behind the scenes, so I, for myself particularly, would love to hear more updates on services for homeless individuals in New Brunswick, any services or ongoing work to address the drug crisis, which I think is something I've asked about a number of times, but I don't have a very clear picture of what is being done by the city to address that problem, and any ongoing work around the environment or climate mitigation efforts. I know that, you know, recycling and litter cleaning is something that's been brought up in response to when I've asked about that in the past, which, those are great things. I hope that there's, you know, there might be some more things related to that area that are already happening, I would just love to know more about it.
And just, you know, and we're placing quarterly reports, so that way there is a break, three months and a half, so the next one, you can get something about, especially in the office and the services in June.
Is that quarterly reports from each of the departments, or specifically?
Well, if you guys, some of the things that people ask, that is an asset, that, you know, that we put back, we think of things, that's, I'm trying to see what to do quarterly, so it makes more sense, so that way there's no, you know, the expectation is there for you.
Wonderful idea, I would ask.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else want to, before, Mr. Valenti?
Yes.
The restrooms from our park, when would they add, the public restrooms open? I know they're usually doing when they're staffed there, tonight they have this?
Well, they'll be open when they're staffed, or I, I would have thought, I believe maybe it's May 1st that we do it, but I will double-check that and get back to you tomorrow morning, first thing.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President, but then, Mr. Cradville, good. Just so that he doesn't have to wait for the next meeting, we've shared all that we can, we'll share regarding the drawing, as you mentioned, personnel matter, on both instances, so there's nothing to do about making next meeting unless, unless anything else. And as it relates to his request for a meeting, with those in administration, if you want to meet with Mr. Cradville, we'll respond accordingly. Until then, you should wait here for us.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to take the motions, my friend?
Second.
Councilmember Casanilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludluk was excused. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Thank you.